This is our second annual Town Hall meeting. We had one last October of 2014, and so we appreciate you being here tonight. Just a few things I want to talk about. First of all, everyone should have gotten an agenda, so you kind of know the format of what our program's going to be tonight. And on the backside of this, there's ways to follow the Chamber on Facebook and Twitter, and there's also a way to follow the Highway 71 construction. And then there's also a description of the work groups that we're trying to form, and I'll talk more about that in a minute if you'll look at those descriptions. Secondly, to help us promote this event better and the things that we're doing for the Chamber, if you don't mind giving us some information on this questionnaire, just strictly, you know, how did you hear about this meeting? Are you a business that's going to be affected by the Highway 71 construction? Name, address, and an email is really important because we are developing email distribution lists to get out information about the construction. And then also, if you are willing to serve for a short amount of time on one of these work groups to help get information out about this construction and what we can do to make the lives of our businesses easier during this construction, because the next three years are going to be difficult and challenging, but I think overall it's going to make our roads safer and make access to Bastrop easier. And then there's a third piece of paper. We would like you to get your questions answered if it's something that's not covered in one of our presentations. So if you'll circle with your questions being addressed to TechStot, The City, or to Move Texas Forward, and please print clearly, because it's really difficult to come up here and ask questions if you can't read someone's handwriting. So if you want a question answered, please fill it out on this card. But tonight our panelists are Roy Dill from TechStot, and I really want to brag on Mr. Dill. We've had several questions that have arisen already about the construction. He has been very, very accessible, and that's very important so we can get questions answered and get concerns answered, and he's gone above and beyond in setting up meetings and going out and meeting with individual business owners. So I want to commend TechStot and Roy Dill at this time for all this help so far on this construction project. And then representing the city, talking about our city projects, we've got Wesley Brandon, our city engineer, Melissa McCollum, she's got a long title.
Planning and development.
Okay. And then we have Jack Ladd, he's with Move Texas Forward. We have a proposition that will be on the ballot in November, and the Bastrop Chamber of Commerce has already passed a resolution in support of Prop 7, along with about 100 other chambers in our community. It's a hugely important proposition that will come up on the ballot that concerns funding our roads from here on out. So to start out our first presentation, I want to turn it over to Roy Dill and let him talk to you about what's going on at Tahitian and 95.
Okay. A little bit about our office. The TechStot office here in Bastrop is located on 174 or...
On tonight or...
I'm sorry?
I didn't hear you.
Okay. Our office is on 21 at 174 East Highway 21, and I've got 15 employees. And I'm the area engineer, Diana Schultz, is the assistant area engineer, and then we have Willie Somora, that's overseeing the construction on 21 at Tahitian, and he's here today. Our mission is to work together to provide safe and reliable transportation solutions for Texas, maintain a safe system, address congestion, connect Texas communities, and become the besting place in planning and estate agency. We're part of the Austin District, which is comprised of 11 counties. We're on the east side of the district, but our district extends all the way over to Mason County, Gillespie County, and that's what comprises the Austin District. And as most of y'all are aware, we have several projects on 71 that are planned. We have the 71 project at Tahitian Village that's under construction now. We have a project coming up on the interchange of 95 and 71, and then we have a project to address issues of the railroad crossing, and then frontage roads for 71 over the Colorado River. At this time, I'd like to have Willie Somora come up and talk a little bit about the construction project that's underway right now at Tahitian.
How is everyone tonight doing? Okay? I'm great, air-conditioned. I've been standing over at 350-degree hot mix all day, so this is beautiful. So as Mr. Dill said, he's our area engineer here in Bastrop, been working for him for almost four years now. This is my rotation out into the field to gain some construction experience. I kind of hope to be involved with all the 71 projects we have coming up. We've got a lot of work coming up in the future, as everybody knows. Currently, we're working on the 71 Tahitian project. Most of you probably are well aware that it's a job intended to construct the grade separation or take 71 over the top of Tahitian. The limits of the job are roughly Industrial Boulevard, I use Industrial Boulevard, it's a little bit to the west, but that's a good reference point. In front of the hospital, the main entrance to the hospital is where the construction project actually ends, and it travels to the east, about half a mile to the east of Tahitian Village. It led in September of 2014 and was awarded to Hunter Industries. I'm sure a lot of you have seen traffic around here from Hunter Industries, so if you've got a complaint about them, call them. And it led for a cost of $13.7 million. We began construction or broke ground in February of 2014, and it actually kind of rolled into March, so we started about eight months ago, seven, eight months ago. We're in Phase 1 construction right now. What that means is we've built the eastbound and westbound frontage roads, we're built out, we've built 75% of the realignment for Tahitian Loop 150. We're working on the other side right now. So most of y'all that are familiar with the area, you've seen the new footprint of the roadway, you've seen, you know, as we've developed, we're to a point now where you can define two different roads. So at 95% complete, what does that look like? I just wanted to present a few pictures here. This depicts if you're traveling eastbound, the intersection would be in front of you. This is going to be the eastbound exit ramp. It's just past the alternate entrance to the hospital. You'll be able to, this is where you'll be coming off 71 and get onto the frontage roads, traveling eastbound to the eastbound frontage road. This is kind of a reverse picture, looking back to the west of the eastbound frontage road. More to show you this, that, you know, we've got sidewalk on throughout the job, we've got curb and gutter out, we've got a really good facility out there. Same thing, this is looking the opposite direction. As you pull up eastbound frontage road, this is going to be the new signal right here. There's going to be multiple lanes of traffic. It's pretty much gonna, it's going to be very similar to the ones we have at 304 throughout town, where you'll have the left turn movements, signalized left turn movements, you'll have the U-turn, and you'll have the through lanes. This is in front of, here's Walgreens entrance onto the frontage road, so this is traveling eastbound still. We'll have lanes of travel continuing on east to the east side of Tahitian Village. Once again, it's all curb and gutter, it's all contained drainage. Most of the job is curb and gutter with storm drainage. I mean, there is side road ditches, we do convey water to drainage points, but most of it's curb and gutter. Now, this is back on the westbound frontage road. Kind of wanted to show this specifically for the fact that this is where the free right, there used to be the free right that took you from 71 to Loop 150 north, but we reconstructed that off of the frontage road, so you'll still have that same access point. If you're traveling westbound on the frontage road, this will be your light here, this is where you, that's where you'd stop to make your left-hand movements into Tahitian Village, and you'll still have that free right movement to go Loop 150 north. Now, this is maybe a little bit of confusing picture, I want to make sure I explain this, because this is the apartment complex. Behind me off the screen here would be the Days Inn. Where my truck is sitting, that's a dividing point between where the furniture will continue straight and where the ramp will peel off and get back on the 71 westbound main lanes. And the reason I show you that is there's going to be a concrete door, actually that we built today, that will deny access directly to the 71 ramp from the apartment complex, and then you'll also have some 8-inch striping that will technically deny access from the Days Inn onto the 71 ramp. That deny, that's a big word, but specifically what we mean there is to make the movement from the apartment complex to get back on the 71, you'll turn and you'll travel west for approximately a quarter mile, and you'll be able to get back on 71 there. You just won't be able to access the ramp directly. And this is a picture of further up, where if you came from the apartment complex, you would be traveling west. It's a single-lane frontage road, everything is one-way. It would take you in front of the Days Inn, I mean, I'm sorry, this is the Super 8, past the mini storage, and then it would button hook back into 71 in front of the hospital. Some of the unique things we've built, we've started retaining walls, where we've built retaining walls for drainage facilities on the job, on both the north and south side at, we call it Colvert 5, but that's pretty much the big drainage creek that carries most of the water from up around the golf course to the north of the job. All that water funnels to this colver. So we've got a good, we've upgraded that facility, we've got some good, pretty MSE walls for any future development there, so. And actually, to go back, I know it's kind of hard to see, but that's kind of a good picture of what's going to be happening in the next phase when we build up, when we start going vertical, the same wall texture, same color. And I think this is the last picture I just kind of wanted to show. We've done a lot of ADA or pedestrian upgrades on this job. This is, if you're on the, this would be the northeast side or westbound frontage road before you cross the loop. We're going to have paved islands, we're going to, pedestrians will actually be able to make a movement in a U from, it would be in front of the hospital, down the eastbound frontage road, they'll be able to cross, cross all four corners under headlights, push buttons. We have sidewalk up and down both sides of the job, so we've done a lot of pedestrian upgrades on the job too. So the big question is, what's next? Where are we going next? Well, as I said, we're 95% complete with Phase 1. Hopefully this date doesn't bite us, but as of right now, we are scheduled to switch traffic from the state Highway 71 mainland to the constructed frontage roads on October 4th, 2015. That's this Sunday night. When you wake up on the 5th, that morning, the 71 main lanes will be shut down, traffic will be diverted off, and you'll go through the new signalized intersection, et cetera. Most of you are aware of that, I mean, we've done it before in the past, but that's when that's going to happen, is on Sunday night, so if you wake up on Monday morning, don't have shell shot. And moving into Phase 2, the next part of the construction job, is to actually start building the bridges, start building the grade separation. You know, the things that we're used to seeing, a lot of know, I think we've heard recently that a lot of people can't really tell what's happening, what are we doing? And so give us a couple months, and you start seeing stuff going vertical, it'll start coming to you. We're getting to the big parts of the job now. And as of right now, our current construction schedule shows that we'll be complete with the entire job in the fall of 2016, so we're wrapping it up. The contractors doing a real good job, and I guess just kind of in closing, I appreciate, you know, every construction job is hectic, and we appreciate y'all's cooperation. Anytime y'all have issues, what's going on, or suggestions, keep us in mind, call the Bastrop Area Office. At the end, we'll have cards and phone numbers, so thank y'all very much. I'm going to turn it back over to Roy.
Thank you, Billy. One thing that I think that he didn't mention is the wall art that was approved to be put on the side of the approach retaining walls. This is what the city has come up with, and I hope that it will enhance the beauty of the structure. Okay. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the 95 overpass. It's currently funded for construction. We're expecting to let the project in December 2015. Originally, we were shooting for August 2015. For various reasons, we decided to move it to a December letting. Our letting's volume was very high for August, and so hopefully by moving to December, we'll get better prices. It also fit our construction schedule a little bit better, because we did have to acquire some right-of-way and have some utility relocations for this project. The current design status, it is 100% complete. We expect construction to begin spring of 2016. We did have to purchase some right-of-way, and we're still in the process of obtaining that right-of-way. And utility relocations, we expect to have finished up probably February or March of next year. We expect the project to last about 24 months. The traffic control plan for the, or the phasing for this contract will be very similar to what we're doing at Tahitian. Well, we're basically going to build the frontage roads and keep traffic in the main lanes the way they're operating currently. Once the frontage roads are constructed, we'll move traffic to the frontage roads, and then we'll start work on the inside lanes. And this will be Phase 2, the highlighted areas where we would, once traffic is moved over onto the frontage roads, then we start working on the main lanes and building the bridge. A little bit of Kevin himself, alright. Okay. One of the other projects that I mentioned was the railroad upgrade. The current schematic shows the frontage roads to have at-grade crossings with railroad. We did a value engineering study, and one of the recommendations out of value engineering study was to remove one of the at-grade crossings. So we're in the process of revising the schematic to try to have this, instead of having an at-grade crossing with the railroad. We would take the eastbound frontage road over the railroad and keep the westbound frontage road with an at-grade crossing. Basically, a value engineering study is required on federal aid projects and for corridors of this size. And back in 2013, we performed the value engineering study. There were several recommendations that came out of the study, and... The value engineering study was had represented from the city of Bastrop, Union Pacific Railroad. We had some members from the Austin District staff, Bridge Farmer and Associates are the consultants that are preparing the schematic provisions, and they've also performed the plans for Tahitian and also the plans for 95. And then S.E.K. Engineering facilitated the study. One of the other recommendations that came out of the value engineering study, the original schematic had only one lane turning off of the westbound frontage road onto 95, and we felt like that was going to be very restrictive, and so we, the study recommended putting in two lanes, and that's what we are including in our plans of 95, is to continue to have two left turn lanes from the westbound frontage road onto 95. This is a little bit more information on the at-grade crossing, the westbound frontage road, just killed it. There it is. The eastbound frontage road will be separated by a positive barrier. So where if you're on Lover's Lane, you could come around and go over the railroad tracks and continue on, similar to how it's done today. Whereas the eastbound frontage road would go over the railroad with a bridge that would span over the Lover's Lane and MLK Drive. It would be a one-way frontage road on the eastbound or on the westbound side, and as well as on the eastbound side, those would be one-way frontage roads. There would also be a ramp exiting off of 71 main lanes, going over the railroad and coming down to where you can turn left on 95. One of the other recommendations from the value engineering study was to put in a delivery lane between the westbound entrance and exit ramps, and we're going to revise the schematic Another change or revision to the schematic that we were proposing to do is to move the ramp, once you came off of 95, to move the location of the ramp further to the east, and so that also was incorporated into the plans for the 95 interchange. Also, the original schematic had three lanes of traffic, or three traffic lanes on the frontage roads, and it was recommended to reduce it down to two lanes, and so we're going to incorporate that change as well. One of the bigger changes that was recommended, the existing schematic had an at-grade crossing or intersection with Water Street. That put the elevation of the bridges into the floodplain elevation for the Colorado What we recommended to do is to raise the bridges out of that floodplain elevation and pretty well match the existing elevation of the main lane bridges that are going over the Colorado River today. And by doing that, we would go, instead of having an at-grade crossing with Water Street, we'll take the bridges for the frontage roads over Water Street and tie back into College I believe the last recommendation was to, the schematic had a new ramp going westbound that would be a separate bridge over the Colorado River. And what the value engineering study recommended was leaving the existing westbound ramp as it is today and eliminating that separate bridge. So that is something else that we're looking to revise the schematic and include this And I believe all questions are expected to be answered at the end of the presentation. I'll turn this over to Wesley.
Everybody, I hope everybody's doing good tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to come out and give you a quick update on what all the city has going on lately. I guess first, of course, my name's Wesley Brandon, I'm the city engineer with the city planning department. I work under Ms. McCollum, who's our director. I guess just what I'd like to talk about tonight is to just, one, give you some information and updates about some projects that we have. Currently, I'll talk about the projects that we have that relate to the Highway 71 improvements and some projects that we've coordinated with the TechStot Area Office. I'll talk about some of our current city projects. Ms. McCollum will give us an update on our comprehensive plan and transportation master plan. I'll talk about the Main Street reconstruction project, some parking improvements on Alley B, which is the parking area behind the Chamber of Commerce. Also talk about some of the recent street improvement projects that we've completed, and then talk about some of the upcoming projects we have. As far as the 71 improvements, one big project that we were able to complete was having the University of Texas Center for Transportation Research conduct a mobility study where they used some very state-of-the-art impacts of the traffic control plans that would be implemented during the 71 improvement work, to get a feel for what kind of impacts the downtown area and other areas around the city could see just as a result of the project. During, through that study, they did find some areas that did show an impact, that did show an increase in traffic through certain areas, especially through Chestnut Street, and they offered several recommendations on how to optimize and reduce that delay. And one task that we will have them come back to do is come back when the Highway 95 overpasses are being built, to actually measure things and monitor things during the construction process, to see if there's any other optimization work that could be done to help minimize delays as you travel through that area. Another project that we're coordinating with the Area Office on is the directional signage that's going to be installed along Highway 71. We're trying to find ways to help attract people and show them how they can get downtown as easy as possible with directional signage. And Mr. Dill already kind of mentioned the overpass mural artwork that we've worked on, really excited about that. We think it's really going to help add to the appeal of the city as you drive through and see the overpasses. Yeah, I don't want to one-up you, but Lawrence is in color. So this is just another representation of what the artwork will look like on all four of the overpass faces as you travel through the Tahitian Drive overpass. And we're hoping to coordinate a similar project, perhaps with a different graphic on the Highway 95 overpass. Ms. McCollum, you can talk about our comp plan.
Thank you, Wesley. I wanted to take this opportunity to let you know that the city is embarking on a comprehensive plan and transportation master plan, and what that is, is it's really the ability for the city to look at holistically kind of our goals and vision, and then also have an action plan for our city as we continue to grow. The comprehensive plan will be broken up into nine different chapters. We'll have an introduction chapter, a growth and administration chapter, one that addresses public facilities, another chapter will address housing in neighborhoods. We'll also have land use, a chapter directly related to transportation, parcel renovation, cultural arts and tourism, and then last but not least, an implementation chapter. So as you can see, it's a very holistic approach. We invite you to participate in that process. We have had a kickoff meeting and a community survey that I hope that you responded in, and we've actually had over 1,500 respondents on that community survey, so we're getting some great feedback already, and we hope to continue the momentum on that. We're actually having a steering committee meeting next Monday, if you so choose to come and attend that, but looking forward to really relaying your feedback and initial response so far. And if you'd like to help us out some more on it, or learn more about what the comprehensive plan is, you can visit our website at planbastrop.org. With that, I'm going to put a plug in for Carolyn on the, they're having a meeting next Monday, October 7, from 6:00 to 7:30, and I'll be at the Bastrop Public Library. They're actually doing a transportation plan at the same time. We're utilizing the same consultant that we're using, Alliance Transportation Group, so there should be a lot of synergy between what the county is doing for their transportation master plan and also what the city's doing. So we invite you to attend that meeting next Monday. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Wesley.
So the next thing, I'll just briefly run through some of the more notable projects that the city completed last year. We recently completed the reconstruction of Farm Street. I hope some of y'all have driven down in front of, just west of the railroad tracks near Fayette Street all the way to Pecan, was completely rebuilt, all the utilities were replaced, and I apologize, I'm sure it's hard to see, but just had some before and after pictures. The continuation of this project is, whenever we receive funding, will continue that work all the way to the entrance of Fisherman's Park. Another street project that we completed last November was the reconstruction of Chambers Street, which again was just another very important project to the city because it really helps improve traffic circulation through the area. Another project that's on the horizon is the reconstruction of Main Street. The, that project is funded by our Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, to be administered by the city, and it involves the reconstruction of Main Street from just south of Pine Street all the way up to Farm Street. And it would include a new concrete street, it will include new sidewalks, there's some water line replacement work that needs to be done. And we anticipate that project being completed in four phases, primarily done at night, and also coordinated with the improvements along seventy-one, with the idea that it will minimize the inconvenience to the traveling public and business owners in the area. Another project that I'm sure most of y'all have noticed, the Bastrop Opera Concert Building is no longer there, and it was replaced with a temporary pavement surface in order to provide temporary parking until we can finalize the permanent layout of the, of Alley D, which is the, at the intersection of Pine Street and Water Street. Some of our upcoming street improvement projects, I don't have a lot of specific streets to talk about, but I can say that we've had seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars put into the, the street improvement, or street repair and maintenance budget for next year. I'm sure some of y'all have seen Church Street is, is not in the best condition right now. We're working on repainting that. We also have a project to provide some repair and maintenance to Tahitian Village Drive. And we have several other streets, we're just trying to finalize the list of, finalize and prioritize the list of streets. We also are hoping to implement a pavement management program where we actually go out to streets that aren't necessarily in need of replacement, but need some routine maintenance work done to them so that they will last as long and perform as well as they can. That is pretty much all we have. I've got some contact information, and we'll certainly leave business cards and be here to answer any other questions you might have. Thanks.
I shouldn't have made an announcement. We have got all these PowerPoints, and we will be getting those up on our website and on our Facebook page. So if you have any questions or couldn't see a picture, we will be posting that, and our information's on the back of your agenda. Also, if you have any questions you've already thought about, and want to go ahead and pass those in, so we can start looking through those questions, we greatly appreciate it, you can just pass them to the end of the road to one of our question takers, and then I'll let Jack take over.
Thank you, Becky. Can you guys hear me okay? Is that too loud? Thank you, guys, for having me. Back to Bastrop, my name's Jack Lad, I'm the president of a group called Move Texas Forward, which primary purpose is to educate our state citizens on transportation-related issues and infrastructure-related issues. And a little side note about me, I, I actually used to work in Bastrop. I worked at the McKinney Ross Nature Park, and I actually see some familiar faces in the crowd. I see Jana back there. And so it's good to be back, back here. And with that, I'll just get started, and hopefully this will be quick and easy to go through. But what's going, what we're going to talk about today is a constitutional amendment, which will be voted on November third, and early voting will start October nineteenth. And this is a statewide constitutional amendment. So a little background on why we have the amendment in front of us this November is in two thousand and ten, Texas dot commissioned a group called the two thousand and thirty Commission, which was meant to study and understand what we would need as a state to maintain our infrastructure and congestion levels at two thousand and ten levels going forward into two thousand and thirty. What they discovered was that there was a ten point eight billion dollar gap between the funding that, oh, I'm sorry, that, let me rephrase that. Texas dot would need ten point eight billion dollars annually in order to basically maintain our roads at two thousand and ten levels going forward. They discovered that Texas dot had a four to five billion dollar gap in that, in that goal, and in order to make up for that, we have the proposition in front of us today. But to give you a little background, by two thousand and thirty-five, we are going to be facing a real problem if we don't address our current needs, our state's infrastructure funding needs. Right now, our roads, thirteen percent of our roads are at fair, poor, or very poor. That's a pretty good rating when you look at it nationally, but if we are not to make up that four to five billion dollar gap that I was telling you about, what we are looking at is that by two thousand and thirty-five, nearly one hundred percent of our roads will be at poor, very poor quality, which to replace them will cost us somewhere in the loo of fifty-four billion dollars. There's also a coming storm that's going to be hitting Texas over the next ten to fifteen years. One is fuel efficiency. Cars, as they get more fuel efficient, are actually affecting the way that we pay for our roads primarily through the gas tax. So as oil prices fluctuate, go down, and as cars get more fuel efficient, our primary source of funding for roads is actually not, no longer very reliable. The second problem is that since two thousand and two, the costs of roads have gone up eighty percent. And federal funding issues, I don't have to tell anyone in this room this, but Congress can agree on how they're going to fund the federal system, which makes up forty-two percent of our budget, which is a problem because Texas dot has to plan ten, fifteen, twenty, or even farther out. And if you don't know that that funding is going to be coming from the feds, and you don't know at what, what rates it will be coming in, projects get delayed, projects get canceled. Side information on this is that we haven't raised the gas tax since nineteen ninety-two, first year of the Clinton administration. And a dollar in nineteen ninety-three that went towards road funding, the same dollar we're getting today, is now worth forty cents to that dollar. In addition to that, Texas is one of four donor states. It's one of four states in the country that actually not only pays for all of its roads, it pays for everyone else's roads. So for every dollar we send the federal government, we only get ninety-five cents back. In addition to that, Texas, I've heard several different studies ranging from a thousand people come here a week to fifteen hundred people come here a week, but the point is, is that we are anticipating that fifteen million new Texans will be here in the next twenty-five years. And one other thing that most people don't think about is that the Panama Canal will be doubling its capacity in two thousand and sixteen, which means that freight is going to become a bigger and bigger part of what makes up traffic on our roads. In fact, because of the Panama Canal and a few other factors, freight traffic is going to be doubling at the rate of commuter traffic in Texas. So one of the things that we also have to consider is that roads are just like the cars that drive on them. One of the things you do for your car is you do regular maintenance. You do a brake check, you rotate tires, you do your oil change, and all these things are not terribly costly. They might be annoying, but they're not terribly costly. It's just the things you need to do to keep your engine running properly. Well, roads are not much different. If you do the maintenance on them, and you do the upkeep on them, a road that was designed the last fifteen to twenty years can last you six years, sixty years, or further. So the maintenance part is very important, and it, it's essentially that if, at this very moment, and, and Roy might be able to correct me on this, or John might be able to, but at this very moment, essentially what we're worried about is just maintaining our roads. I mean, we're talking about building new ones, but this is just to do the oil changes. This is the money we need to keep up our roads, so that we don't have to pay for them more in the long run. Some other typical road facts, state highways have a typical design life of fifteen to twenty years, and our interstates have a design life of about thirty years, but we basically just need to keep up with the maintenance on it, which we currently are having trouble doing. Consequences of inaction. Now, one of the big things, obviously, is congestion. You in Bastrop, I know, as I used to work here, face this every day on your way to work, on your way back home, and the average Texan makes up, or rather wastes about fifteen hundred dollars annually stuck in traffic. That's just sitting there, burning gas, or not making it to work on time, or what have you. Whereas if you live in this area, Austin, the Bastrop, or surrounding Austin area, Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, is actually, your numbers are quite a bit higher. But anecdotally, one of the more interesting things, one of the bigger problems with congestion, is if you're a Fortune five hundred company, if you're Facebook or Toyota, and you're wanting to open a plant in Bastrop or what have you, one of the first things you look at is the labor pool. And so you have this labor pool and say, okay, this is enough people for us to actually put a plant here as a viable option. But the second thing they look at is congestion. And you may have a labor pool of a million people, but if only a hundred thousand of these people could actually get into your plant in an hour or less, then all of a sudden your labor pool's not a million people, it's a hundred thousand people. So it's a real quality of life issue as well as a real job issue. So what is Proposition Seven? By voting yes on Proposition Seven, what you will be seeing is that two point five billion dollars from the future sales tax, and I'll go more into that, will be dedicated annually to Texas dot. In addition, thirty-five percent of the net revenue from the vehicle sales tax, so anything over five billion dollars, thirty-five percent of that will go to the general highway fund. So what does that mean? So last year, the sales tax, we received roughly twenty-eight billion dollars from our sales tax here in Texas, which makes up a big portion of our, of our revenue in the state from the state government. What they are anticipating is that by two thousand and seventeen, that the state sales tax will be thirty-one, roughly thirty-one billion dollars. So we are looking at a window of twenty-eight billion dollars, so starting at twenty-eight billion dollars revenue, to thirty point five billion dollars, so two point five billion dollars. That is a window of sales tax revenue that will go one hundred percent to the general highway fund, and I'll go into more detail on that. And last year, the vehicle sales tax made a five billion dollars. So anything past five billion dollars in two thousand and seventeen, I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen for the second one. So anything past five billion dollars, thirty-five percent of that will go to the general highway fund. So what can this money be used for? It can be used for only two things, the construction maintenance and acquiring right-of-ways for roads, and to repay the principal and interest on Texas dot's debt, which is, you could argue fairly substantial. Essentially, we've maxed out our credit card paying for roads over the past ten years. And I'll, I'll be happy to let John or Roy go into more detail of that. I'm not sure that's, am I right on that? About thirty-one billion dollars is what we're at, if we include principal and interest? Do you know, John?
I don't know that.
I've, I've heard it's about thirty-one billion, but we can double-check that. But essentially, what we're saying is that we've maxed out our credit card in Texas, and we're going to have to start paying that off. So the four to five billion dollar gap that I'm telling you about, that, that does include having to pay off these, these loans or bonds that we have from the state. So is this, is this the most efficient way of solving the problem? I, you could argue no. You could say that, well, we could raise taxes. We could raise registration fees. I think the registration fee's like sixty-seven dollars right now, it's one of the lowest in the country. You could raise it to a hundred dollars. There's, there's other things that we could have done, but there was no, not the political will to do it according to the authors of this bill. And I'm sure John can tell you more about that when he speaks next. But will this raise your taxes? No, it will not, because it's going to be coming from future revenue that does not exist yet. It's money that will be coming in, or rather, that they give a ninety-five percent probability that comes in. Now, some of you may ask, and I get this question a lot, well, what happens if, you know, if it doesn't get to twenty-eight billion dollars? Well, that means we don't get a dollar going to the general highway fund. And if it goes over thirty-one billion, it's just in that window that the money goes to the general highway fund. It cannot go towards toll roads, and, but generally speaking, it has no vocal opposition. It's passed in the House, I think, by a hundred and forty-eight to one fifty, something like, one hundred and forty-eight reps voted yes on this. So I think it's generally accepted. I'm, I'm not going to tell you it's going to fix all our problems, and all of a sudden we're going to have all the roads we need. This will basically make sure that we can maintain our roads going forward into two thousand and thirty. So it's not the perfect plan, but it's a really good one for our current situation. And with that, I'll be happy to pass along to John and take any questions later.
Some of the best advice I got from fellow chambers across the state was to be sure and get your state representative involved with any construction you had going on in your area. We've been very blessed that our representative for District Seventeen, John Sirier, has been very willing to come and be a part of these discussions with us tonight, and been very involved with just everything that we've got going on, not only in Bastrop, but Bastrop County and the four other counties that he represents. So he is here tonight, and I'm going to let him get to say a few words.
Thank you, Becky. First of all, I want to say how great it is that we have a chamber and leadership of that chamber to have a forum like this and have an event where we do discuss. And then we also are so fortunate to have leaders of Texas dot to come over and spend their time and, and introduce, and I appreciate the words from the field, directly from the field, and telling us what's going on. And then from the city of Bastrop, the planning department being able to do that, and then Jack to educate us on Prop Seven, which will affect not only here in Bastrop, but the rest of the state of Texas. So we're glad to see that. And then I want to say how great it is to look out and see this many people that are here this, this afternoon, on a Monday, Monday afternoon, to talk about roads, which for most people is not the most exciting thing. For me, I actually like transportation, because it's one of those things that I got involved with early on as a county commissioner, and working with Judge Poppy and Clara Beckett at Campo for the last five years, but also realizing, just like the chamber and others do, how important it was touched on, how important it is for economic development, for quality of jobs, for quality of life. It's one of those big pillars that I look at, is, you know, transportation with affordability, and then, and then also too, with our education, is those, those three pillars for creating good jobs. It is so exciting, when, when Roy was going through that, and you guys were listing out the projects, and the city of Bastrop were listing out all the projects that are going on, I wanted everybody to realize, and I think everybody in the room does, look at how much work is going into this, and how much work is, is being done right now. We are so fortunate in this community. I'm excited to see that much progress being made. And it was also mentioned, we saw some dates there, that it started back in two thousand, two thousand and one. It takes planning, takes a lot of planning. These things are, are not, not just thought of in a couple of years and the funding shows up right away. That's exactly the reason why we passed the opportunity to have a constitutional amendment with Prop Seven, is because that, that shows that we have some future funding, there's an opportunity there for future funding in the future, which will also help us in the planning and for Texas dot to be able to, to look forward. And then also too, as mentioned, Bastrop County is working on revising their transportation plan. I know that Bastrop County Commissioner Penny, I see you there shaking your head, I know you guys had done a, when Rachel Planford worked on it, I guess that was probably about six, seven, maybe longer, eight years ago, was the, the first plan that I had witnessed and looked at. We actually shared some of those ideas because transportation doesn't stop at the county lines. You know, we always kind of think of it, especially on commissioners' boards and things like that, but all of us that drive the roads, we don't, we don't, when we transfer over to Lee County, or Caldwell County, or even into Travis County, we don't care what county we're in, we just care that there's good quality roads and transportation. But that takes planning, that takes coordination. And so again, we're seeing the fruits of that, of that labor, and that, all that planning and wisdom that was done early on, because now we're, we're at a point where we're also getting our lion's share of quality, quality projects and quality, quality roads. And those meetings are coming real soon, I believe. I believe we've got three of those planning meetings coming up, one in Elgin, Smithville, and then also here in Bastrop. And again, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but it's very important for you to tell your neighbors and tell others, participation is a big key to that transportation plan. That is written in there, that we get public comments, we get participation from, from the public. So I encourage everyone, I know, again, I'm talking to people that are very involved with our community, but remind your neighbors that these meetings are there, and we want to hear your voice and hear, hear your thoughts on that. Can't stress anymore, Jack did a great job, we're talking about Prop Seven and the opportunity that that will bring for our state, but also too, here locally, obviously with Bastrop County and Lee County and Caldwell County, we've got such an immense growth on our hands. And so transportation is just vitally critical for us to continue on to have our quality of life. So I encourage you guys, propositions that are going to be up on the ballot on November So I encourage you guys, propositions that are going to be up on the ballot on November 3rd, I feel like this is probably one of the most important ones that are there. So please, please again, encourage others to go out and vote, because we do need this to pass. Be staying afterwards. I've got Melissa Demenchak, our Chief of Staff. Many of y'all know Melissa, our chief for District 17. Both of us will be here staying afterwards if you do have any other questions. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to be y'all's state representative for District 17.
We have a couple other dictators in the House, I believe. I saw Judge Poppy standing back there. Commissioner Willie Pinya right back there in the middle. Appreciate y'all coming out and supporting this tonight. And also, I'm going to recognize the board directors from the Bastrop Chamber. If you're a board director, please say that. I've got several in the House. Thank you for coming out and supporting this, and thank you for your questions. Just not too late to turn questions. If you have questions, just pass them to Dan Smith, I'll take them out. This first question is for TechStop. Why was 95 first? Oh, why wasn't it first? I'm sorry, why wasn't it first? See, I told you this is hard to rewind on this lot. It's not fun to be a moderator.
Okay, there's several reasons. One, because of the additional right-of-way that was required in the utility relocations, we weren't able to move forward as fast on the Tahitian, I'm sorry, on the 95 project, whereas we were able to get the funding and the project at Tahitian, we had the right-of-way, we had the utilities cleared, and we were poised to move faster on it. So that's the primary reason as to why it was built first.
Next question is for the city of Bastrop. Are you eliminating the parking on Main Street?
No, we're not. I will say for the Main Street plan, there are a lot of different ideas that have been brought up in regards to the parking, the type of parking on Main Street, whether it be parallel or continued to be angled or something else. So I think though, that level of detail is still being decided, but parking will remain on Main Street.
Next question is for TechStop. It says, will there be additional lanes added over the railroad and river?
Under, well, yes and no. Under the project or the project there at 95, we will be building a separate bridge that goes over the railroad or the entrance ramp as you're turning west off of 95, going onto 71. There won't be any additional lanes put on the main lanes. But once we build the frontage roads and connect the frontage roads for each side of the river, there will be additional lanes then for the, for the, what I would consider the local traffic. Instead of having to merge onto the 71 main lanes to get across the river, you'll be able to stay on the frontage road and get across the river, and it would really help with the local circulation more than anything.
Another question for TechStop. Was there a flyover for 95 north considered?
There was a lot of different things that were looked at. For the volume of traffic that we have on 71, I don't believe a flyover would be justified. That is something that may be considered in the future as traffic increases on 71. But at this point, with the proposed interchange, I believe that we'll be able to handle the existing traffic in probably the next, probably five to 10 years. But we will continue to monitor the situation, and as more traffic is using the facility, we'll make whatever changes we need to accommodate it.
Sorry, Roy, most of these are TechStop, so thank you for being put on the hot seat. Next question for TechStop. How will ingress and egress to Lover's Lane be handled during the Highway 71 construction?
Egress and ingress should remain about the same as it is now. Like I said earlier, we will be keeping the westbound frontage road with an at-grade crossing to where someone traveling on Lover's Lane that wanted to go back to get on MLK will be able to do that. They wouldn't be able to go north on MLK, it would just be going south on MLK. But if you were needing to go north on MLK, it would probably be, you could make the turnaround underneath the bridge and use a different roadway, such as Water Street or Jefferson, some of the others, to be able to get onto the north side.
Next question for TechStop. How long will the construction take?
The construction project on 95 is about two years. We're looking at starting spring of 2016, should be March or April, somewhere in that timeframe. And so about two years later, we should finish the construction for that interchange. At this time, we don't have funding for the improvements for the bridges over the Colorado River to connect the frontage roads. We are in the process of making the revisions to the schematic that I talked about earlier. We will have to go back through, anytime you make revisions to the schematic, we'll have to go back through and revise the environmental document, we'll have to revise the, or have a opportunity for a public hearing and get input from the public as to whether the changes that we're wanting to make, if everyone is okay with those changes, you'll be given an opportunity to make comment on that. Depending on what types of comments we get, we'll determine how long it takes to complete the environmental process and the schematic revision process. But probably, I would say, within the next year or so, we should be completing the plan, getting the plan work done, and then it's a matter of getting the funding for construction. So I'd say it's probably still a good four, five years out for the bridges across the Colorado River.
Another one for TechStop. It says, will there be two lanes each way on the temporary 71 roads?
Yes, we are proposing, there may be some times when we have to close a lane, but they should be for a very short duration. But at this time, where our plan is, is to keep two lanes open each direction through the construction.
All right, let's give Roy a break. Let's skip over to the city of Bastrop. It says, what's happening to the finish on Spring Street? Not paved completely, porta potty still on the side yard.
That is a very good question. We are finalizing the utility replacement work that was done on Spring Street, Hazel Street, and Walnut Street. And we're working with the contractor right now to finalize the pavement repairs. One issue we've come to realize is that Spring Street, like several other streets in town, are in need of repair. And so we are working with the contractor to see if it makes more sense to withhold and put more of a temporary condition, repair condition, so that we could use those savings to do a full reconstruction project. You may have noticed in my presentation where I put other streets to be determined, that's one of the issues we're dealing with, is trying to prioritize the list of streets, because it seems to, seems to change periodically as we move through some of these utility projects.
Here's another one. We probably touched on it a little bit about Spring Street, but I want to show you answer all the questions that are being asked. Will Spring Street be repaid or just left with patches over areas where lines have been dug from recent construction?
We are finalizing the list, and we hope to repave Spring Street as well as Walnut Street. There are several streets that weren't originally as high of a priority, but the way we've tried to set our project listing up is, we can, we want to replace the utilities that need to be replaced, because obviously, it does not make sense to repave a road just to come back and replace the utilities, because you tear out what you've just worked on. And so that is one, one street that's definitely being looked at to have a full reconstruction project.
All right, Roy, you got your, caught your breath over there?
Yes.
Okay. Will Highway 71 become a toll road?
There's no plans at this point for that to happen, and actually, our legislation, our current legislation is that a current free road cannot become a toll road. They can add toll lanes if they're adding capacity, but the same number of lanes that are free today would have to remain free in the future. And that's our current policy.
This one might be for both TechStop and the city. Says, is there any plan for another bridge, a third one, over the river?
That's another very good question. A lot of these, some of those questions are being somewhat delayed, because we are going through our comprehensive plan and transportation master plan update. And with that work, which we're very excited about, we actually have Alliance Transportation Group, who is the very well-known transportation engineering firm in Austin, that is actually, they're working on the county's transportation plan. So we feel very fortunate that we have the ability to really look at everything, at least county-wide, that will overlap with the city's transportation network. And part of that plan will include recommendations for future improvements, which very well could include a new bridge.
TechStop. What consideration has been given to the entrance into Pine Forest? It says the speed limit is 75 miles an hour on Highway 71. And without the traffic light, there will be no brake in the traffic.
I'm not sure where Pine Forest is, is that?
Written underneath, it says McAllister, parentheses.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's see. There's a project underway right now to add a safety line, which is disillumination at that intersection. There, I believe the last study that was performed did not meet warrants for a signal light. That is something that could happen in the future if it conditions change and if it does meet warrants. Not sure, did the question also talk about, oh, the speed limit, okay. Most people are a little unsure of how speed limits are set in Texas. The speed limit is actually set by you. We do traffic studies to see what the 85th percentile of the existing traffic is operating at. But TechStop doesn't set the speed limit. You did, whenever you're driving the roadways. The legislation is that we are mandated to post the speed at the 85th percentile. So we go out and we do our traffic studies, we see what the 85th percentile is, and we post it accordingly. So there are some exceptions to that, and that is if the roadway is experiencing more accidents on a similar facility statewide, then we can make some revisions or lower the speed limit in those instances. Also, a lot of times, I'll get a request to do a study on a roadway. And what a lot of people don't realize is that it can go both ways. You may want to lower the speed limit, but when we go out and do the study, we find out that the traffic is actually traveling at a much higher speed. And so instead of lowering the speed limit, it ends up going up. Well, you can imagine the phone calls back yet. I didn't want the speed to go up, I wanted it to go down. Well, again, we are mandated to post a speed limit at what 85% of the population is traveling the roads at. And the reasoning is, is they feel that 85% of the population travel at a reasonable speed. No matter what the speed limit or the posting on the roadway is, 85% of the people will travel at a reasonable speed. So there's 15% of us, and I'm probably one of them, that exceeds that speed limit a few miles an hour. But anyway, that's how speed limits are set. And the last speed study that was done on 71, we ended up raising the speed limit to 75, just outside of, or just past Tahitian Drive. And that study was done, I think, less than a year ago. I don't think that it's going to change if we were to do another study at this point in time, but it is something that we will continue to do studies and post the speed accordingly.
Okay, Jack, I've got one for you. Ready? And actually, I think it's probably a TechStop question, but we'll see. It says, does TechStop pay for toll road right-of-ways?
That's probably, that's probably a tough question.
All right, Roy.
I don't make a stab at it. I don't do too much toll roads. I came from West Texas, and I've been here four years, and I really haven't had much work or anything else to do with toll roads that are going on in central Texas. I think it depends on the type of project it is. For instance, SH130 is a concession project, which means the concessionaire came in and purchased the right-of-way and did the work on the main lanes. And then they have a certain timeframe, I can't remember if it's 50 years or whatever it is, that they operate the facility and maintain it, and they get a proceeds or portion of the money that's collected from the toll roads. There are some other toll facilities that aren't concession projects, and I'm not exactly sure how those projects are funded or how that's handled. But I'd be glad if the person that asked that question, I can get an answer and give it to you, give you your email address, or give you a call.
Sorry, we don't have a name on that one, so whoever submitted that question, if they want to talk to Roy afterwards, I'll set that one aside. Another one for TechStop. It says, will there be a service road behind Mount Rose Missionary Baptist Church next to Popeye's Chicken?
The frontage road will go in front of the, in front of the Popeye's Chicken, and will tie in, very similar to the other intersections that we have frontage roads at, so.
But yes, it'll be a new frontage road from 95 to College Street.
Yes, that's correct. There will be a new frontage road from 95 to College Street.
Another one for TechStop. It says, your design seems inadequate for handling the volume of eastbound Texas 21 traffic. Why have you not considered a flyover?
Is this at the 95 interchange?
Yes.
I'm not sure what all was considered whenever this project was initially looked at, but I'm sure that they, that there wasn't anything that was taken off the table. But what we look at is the volume of traffic, we look at what an interchange can We look at what an interchange can handle. And with the current design, we feel confident that it will handle the amount of traffic that's out there today and with room for expansion. For a flyover, the traffic volumes have to be fairly large, I mean, much larger than what we're seeing on 71 to justify the cost of a flyover. Something else to consider, flyover, the footprint of a flyover is fairly large because the design speeds of the horizontal curves have to be fairly flat to handle the speed of the facility. In order to do a flyover at that intersection, it would require additional right-of-way. Could impact Buc-E's or other businesses at that intersection. And at this point in time, I don't feel like it's necessary. There may be some other things that we can look at. If traffic is trying to get from 21 over to 71, maybe there are some alternate locations that we could get that traffic moved over without having to go through that interchange. So those are some other things that we'll look into and see if it's feasible to pursue.
Okay, this one's for the city of Bastrop. It says, when is Main Street construction planned?
I think the tentative start date was after the first of the year, but there is not a final scheduled start date for that project.
Okay, here's another one for TechStop. When would you expect the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge and Colorado River Crossing improvements to start?
Like I said, there's still a lot of work that has to go into it before we can get to the construction phase. I would say at this point, we're probably looking at four to five years out before construction would begin on those projects. And again, they're unfunded, so a lot of it's going to depend on securing the funding and getting all of the design work complete.
Another one about the 95 overpass. It says, how will the 95-bound traffic be monitored during construction? In parentheses, it says, lifetimeing police assistance, especially on weekends and holidays.
As far as monitoring goes, it's going to be more of going out and just observing the conditions. I know we've got a problem right now on weekends, on holidays. During construction, those problems are going to be the same or worse. We're going to try our best to maintain the number of lanes that we have today, but we already have traffic backing up on 71 whenever special events are occurring or, I believe, even on the weekends, on just a regular weekend. So that's why the interchange is being constructed, that's, we're aware of it. We feel like that once the construction's complete, that will address the problem. But as far as, we will have police officers or the ability to utilize police officers during construction if it's needed. We have that on several of our other projects whenever we're doing certain phases of work and we'll utilize them when we need to.
Okay, this is one about Prop 7. It says, trying to decipher this a little bit. Based on future maintenance, how the cost rising, does that mean that the money asking for today will be enough for the future?
So I'm guessing that whether or not the assessed $10.8 billion that they looked at in 2010, and the gap of $4 to $5 billion that they had at that point, will that be enough to do the maintenance going forward into the future? I can almost certainly say no. I think that we don't know what inflation cost will rise to eventually, but if they continue at the current rates, my guess would be no. But I don't think there's anyone that would actually be able to answer that question for sure. But I think that this is an issue that we continue to look at and continue to address as we go forward. I think that this proposition, like I said, is going to kind of fix the problem temporarily and it'll keep us, it's definitely a move in the right direction. But is it going to fix all our problems? No, and I think that your concerns of will it last going forward are warranted.
Okay, this one is probably for the city. It says, how much growth is expected locally?
I wish I knew. I will say that is something that we're looking at in this comprehensive planning process. It's funny, with all the regional planning organizations we have in the Texas State Data Center, without a doubt, they have the central Texas region, which Bastrop and Bastrop County are part of, growing tremendously. You think about, I mean, they say 100 people move to the Austin region every day, you know, 100 new cars on the road, you know, where are those people going? Quite frankly, some of those cars and people are moving to Bastrop and Bastrop County. So I think what we can do as planners and what we're trying to do in this comprehensive planning process is to truly look at that growth and plan accordingly for it, whether it's to update our water and sewer capacities and redo old lines and transportation capacities and plan for the growth that is coming. So I don't have a good answer for that question, but I do, I would like to say that we're hoping to plan for it and do some great planning, I guess, overplanning for that growth and really look at that in our comprehensive planning process.
Okay, this is another one for TechStop. It says, why is there so much attention being put on Tahitian Village? Bastrop has new homes scheduled off of 21 and behind Walmart.
I hope I understand the question as to why we're building the overpass at Tahitian before we're building other overpasses. And like we were talking earlier, it had mainly to do with the ability to move forward on that project because we already had the right-of-way and utility adjustments that were needed in order to build it. There is a lot of growth along 21, there's a lot of growth on 71. And, you know, we have a pretty good list of projects that we would like to see built and we're working on trying to get the funding and the plan work done to take advantage of funding when it becomes available.
Okay, for the city of Bastrop. It says, on construction of Main Street, will parking spaces that were lost be reinstated? We haven't lost any parking on Main yet, have we? No?
Yeah. I can clarify that when you put in the lamp lights, some places get their local parking spaces. One reason that the Main Street reconstruction project has seen a little bit of a delay is once we published the original plan, that call for just removing and replacing and ending up with the same sidewalk widths, the same parking layout and the same driveway, driving lane width, we had some community feedback that requested us to look at other alternatives for providing wider sidewalks and providing wider travel lanes. So we've gone back and looked at several different options, different ways to balance the mobility, which would have to do with your travel lanes and the parking layout. And so depending on which option is chosen, which is up to the EDC and the City Council to make those final decisions. Even the worst-case option, I believe, we really did not lose more than two spaces. I think it just, that layout would need to be designed.
To pull up real quickly, I do think the city, especially with the loss of parking on Chestnut Street with the center turn lane being completed on Chestnut, that's partially why the city purchased what was the old advertiser building or the parking there on Water Street. So with that, the city does have plans, as Wes talked about it. It's also called ALI-D, is improving that and making that a permanent surface parking lot that will increase the parking capacity of additional 32 spaces from what's currently there now.
Another question for the city of Bastrop. It says, going east from Lover's Lane, will there be, will that be going from College Street to MLK to Jasper and back to the line on 71?
So there should be a construction of a frontage round, a frontage road south of 71 from, from those streets to, I guess, what would be front, in the front of Jack in the Box and CBS and all those stores. So there will be a new frontage road constructed there that will connect College Street.
From the south side of 71?
Yes.
Will you be able to get to the frontage road from, once you have to get under?
You won't be able to get to it from Lover's Lane?
Oh, because Lover's Lane is west of the railroad tracks. Okay, so you, no, not from Lover's Lane, will you stay on the south side of 71 over? You would have to travel north currently, much like you do now, come back over on College and then turn back south to back up with the new frontage road that will be in front of there.
That was the point, if you walk the way together, you're not going to be able to go north on MLK after you get off of Lover's Lane because it's going to be a one-way frontage road. But anything coming off of Lover's Lane trying to get east is not going to be able to come back around and come back under. You go into Jasper Street, you get back down. And that's the same, the old truth for everything coming south of Main Street, of Chestnut and Water Street, we're not going to be able to go east. Is that correct?
I don't have a good answer for you yet because one of the changes that we were talking about that we're looking at is taking the frontage road over the railroad for eastbound How that's going to impact access, it depends on where that frontage road comes back down and ties in in front of Jack in the Box as to what we can do in there. It's something that we haven't got resolved yet. We're looking at a couple of different options. We may be able to fit one lane in to where it'd be a one-lane frontage road right from basically MLK over to the Jack in the Box. Those are some things that we still got to look at. I don't have a good answer for you today.
But it just, it just looks like, if anybody that wanted to head east from 71 into town is going to have to go out Chestnut. Is there no other way to?
Well, there's some existing county roads, I can't think of the name of it, that runs by the sheriff's office between the sheriff's office and the Jackson.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's Jasper Street, there's no way to get to Jasper Street by Lover's Lane if there's company wanting to track.
No, you would be able to get from Lover's Lane, you'll be able to go over the railroad tracks and head back south and you'll be able to get over to, you say Jasper or?
Jasper.
And then Jasper will take you over to Jackson. So there will be that connectivity and it's possible, if we can get it to work out, what I'd like to see is a, at least a one-lane road connecting MLK to the frontage road. I would like to do that, but we're going to have to look at that really hard. The terrain is a little.
Well, there's the old branch and all the railroad branches that come right there.
Right. Yeah, there are definitely some obstacles that we're going to have to overcome, but that is my desire would be to have it connected up with the frontage roads.
How will Lover's Lane get westbound on the 71? Is that going to change or, part of you can come in, get on 71 and head westbound? Or do you ever do the gull construction?
You'll be able to get on the.
Since you're talking about these bridges that are going to cross, are going to be planned for four years?
Well, you will be able to continue to access College Street from Lover's Lane like you are today.
And then enter 71?
Not until the county road or the frontage road bridges are built over the Colorado River.
So then you're allowed to go through town or something, get on Chestnut?
Well, you will still have one, there's, right now, there's two crossovers connecting College Street over to the main lanes of 71. And we'll be removing one of those crossovers when we build the 95 project, but we'll be, one of the crossovers will still remain until we connect the frontage road across the river. So you'll still, from College Street, you'll be able to access the 71 main lanes or go into town, similar to what you're doing today.
All right. All right, I'm going to give you one more opportunity to turn in any questions. I'll read the last question that I've got up here, and it's, where Move Texas Forward. Explain what is Move Texas Forward and what is its purpose other than seeing Prop 7 passed?
Well, essentially, Prop 7 is what we're focusing on this fall because we feel like getting it passed and getting it passed by a substantial margin is very important to send the message to the legislature that transportation funding is still integral and we're still going to have to pay attention to it. But in the long run, what we look at is transportation technology. So for example, we'll be lobbying for, there's different things like, for example, like cameras, ambient cameras that can tell, and it is more of a thing in North Texas, but a big problem in northern Texas when snow comes in is that the school board has to make the decision, well, do we keep the school open or do we shut it for liability purposes? And usually the school board finds out, well, we, the same way you and I do, just they turn on the news at 5:00 a.m. and see someone doing a report on taking ice off their car and they just turn it off. But that turns out to be a big problem for cities that we actually lose millions of dollars that day because parents have to stay home with their kids when it was not warranted to shut the schools down. So we look at technologies that can make us more efficient as a society and to essentially just improve our congestion levels across the state, however that may be.
All right, let's give these folks a big round of applause. It's been a lot of fun being on the hot seat like this and especially after working a long eight-hour day, especially if you were staying out there in the heat over the asphalt. But we appreciate them being willing to come and answer these questions and the partnership that we have between all the entities so that we can move Bastrop forward in a positive way. But we need your feedback, so please, if you take the time to fill out this form so that we can plan future meetings and also help disseminate information, go give us your email. And I want to thank John again for being in the house with us and driving here. He's had a long day, I'm sure. He's all over the place.
Not done yet.
Where are you going then?
Spent though.
Energizer bunny over there. Anyways, but thank you for coming out. And if you ever need future information, please contact the Bastrop Chamber of Palmer's and we appreciate your time seeing you. Thank you very much. Scott Pickens.
Thank you.